I didn't know if I had a... I haven't really been any better than...
Make your rise for the Pugilist's for five. Pugilist's for five, in the United States of America. To the Republicans who wish to stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Open the meeting to comments from the public at this time. Anybody who wishes to address the board may do so. Close the meeting, close the comments at this time. You'll have no chance at the end of the meeting. Minutes of the previous meeting, regular and special, February 2nd and February 7th. You all have copies. Is there any addition or deletions?
Make a motion to accept the minutes as written?
I'll second that. Motion made by trustee Menard, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Any discussion? There's no discussion, all those in favor, vote by use of sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Bills.
No additions or deletions.
Thank you, I'll send.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
Second.
Motion made by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Menard. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by use of sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondents?
We have one letter that we received. It was from Mr. Alex DeGree. It was written to my attention. It's, Dear Mr. Baharnwa, I have resided in Rouse's Point for about ten years. After looking over a five-year period throughout Clinton County for the right house to buy, my wife and I found property that met our specs right here in the village. We purchased the Roth House at 338 Lake Street in November of 2002. Having lived in different parts of the world, we have found that one of the elements that constitute a quality residential area is the absence of unsightly weather-prone overhead utility cabling. The fact that Rouse's Point was embarking on a program of bearing such cabling weighed in our decision to buy this house. We were therefore displeased, to say the least, to learn that the lines and poles in front of our house were not to be removed in the village program. We called the various utilities and discovered that only cable, TV, and phone lines were carried on these particular poles. The removal of the lines and poles was sufficiently important to us that we struck a deal with the utilities to split the costs three ways. The work was completed early last spring, and our share came to $1,864.88. And you see attached, there's a copy of the invoice from Champlain Telephone Company. As taxpayers paying our fair share and more, we feel we should have received the same benefits from the village's cable-bearing program as our neighbors on Lake Street. Accordingly, we request a reimbursement from the village of the amount of $1,864.88. Thank you for giving us your prompt attention, sincerely, Alex DeGree. That he notes at the bottom, the house is registered under Elizabeth Sletter. The invoice from Champlain Telephone shows it was paid, or split three ways. Champlain Telephone paid supposedly a third, Time Warner a third, and Mr. DeGree paid one-third. That's all I have for correspondence. I don't know how you'd like me to respond to that.
Do we have any comments?
Well, I think the whole key to this is, we entered into an agreement, not the village, but he did. So, I don't think we're responsible enough.
I don't believe there are holes in the first one.
No, there weren't. We had nothing on them. All his utilities came in on the northwest corner of his house off Smith Street. They did not come in off Lake Street. We provided conduit underneath the road so the cable and television, telephone could, at whatever time they saw fit, they were going to do the upgrade, put that cable underneath the road. It mattered we had what the conduits.
You shouldn't have entered the agreement. He didn't want to honor it.
No, that's good. He should have made... I would write him a letter back, Phil, stating, he's the one who made the agreement. I mean, if he wanted us to do something about it, he should have came to us beforehand, where we might have been able to take the poles down and, you know, add a lesser cost.
Actually, we could.
Yeah, if they weren't our poles, we couldn't take them down.
They weren't our poles, and it wasn't our utilities on them.
I mean, if they're nice-sized poles, there's nothing we can do about it.
They were nice-sized poles, and they were left there.
Write him, in that sense, and say that they were New York State electric, gas, telephone poles, and there was nothing that we could do to take them down. We're sorry he had that expense, but that was his decision.
That's all I have for correspondence.
Okay, reported mayor and board of trustees. First thing on my agenda is New York State Legislature Forum being held at the Holiday Inn in Plattsburgh on February 27th at 7:30 in the morning. Does anybody from the board wish to go? I believe the administrator and myself want to go, but nobody else. Senator Benny Litt will be there, Assemblyman Chris Ortloff, and Assemblywoman Tricia Seaworth.
You make a motion?
Yes, I do.
I'd like to make a motion to allow the mayor and Phil to go to that.
Second.
Motion made, and seconded, any discussion? Being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by use of sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Okay, I have a resolution here for the general election. And by the good graces of our village clerk, he is going to read it.
The resolution states, whereas the next general election for officers of the village of Rouse's Point shall be held on March 16th, 2004, and whereas the Board of Trustees is required by Section 15-104, sub-paragraph 3D of the election law, to adopt a resolution designating the polling places, comma, the hours the polls shall be opened, and addresses of those nominated. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of the village of Rouse's Point designate polling place for each election district to be Halsted Hall, Rouse's Point Civic Center, 39 Lake Street, Rouse's Point, New York, 12979, that the hours during which polls shall be open shall be 12 o'clock noon until 9:00 p.m., and that the candidates nominated for office in accordance with the provision of Article 15, Village Election Law, are George A. Rivers, 50 Pratt Street, Rouse's Point, New York, 12979, nominated for the office of mayor for a two-year term; Robert J. Clark, 54 Rose Avenue, Rouse's Point, New York, 12979, nominated for the office of mayor for a two-year term; R. Bill Junior Moore, 40 Lake Street, Rouse's Point, New York, 12979, nominated for the office of trustee for a two-year term; Dale N. Menard, 18 Priscilla Lane, Rouse's Point, New York, 12979, nominated for the office of trustee for a two-year term; John F. Huckrow, 15 Stewart Street, Rouse's Point, New York, 12979, nominated for the office of trustee for a two-year term; Nancy A. Mattoon, 8 Barnes Street, Rouse's Point, New York, 12979, nominated for the office of trustee for a two-year term. Be it further resolved that the village clerk is hereby directed to publish this resolution in full in the press Republican, and to post a copy of this resolution in at least six conspicuous public places within the village on or before March the 6th, 2004, and that a copy be placed in, be placed at the polling place. Resolution shall take effect immediately upon passage. This requires a roll call vote.
Put that on the motion. Second.
Roll call vote, trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee, I'm fully absent. Trustee Penfield?
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson?
Aye.
And mayor votes aye. I want to make the following appointments to the zoning board of appeals. Those approved to fill the unexpired, uh, expired term of Tom Greenwood until 2006. Benny Arnold to fill the unexpired term of Dick Farrell until 2007. Settle. That doesn't need a vote in the board, does it, Phil?
Yes, it does.
Put that part of the motion.
Second.
Who will move for second?
Dale. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote by use of sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. And that's it for me, trustee Menard.
I just have one item tonight. Mike Lyons did a, did an audit on Champlain Plastics for, an electrical audit, which we have done before throughout the village for commercial and industrial users. He made some recommendations to them, I guess, and to us, that, you know, they need to do some improvements, and it would help us in our electrical bill if they did some improvements in their, in their plan. And one of them was to build a, an air duct, I guess, to their chillers, which would be a cost of $17,000, and they're looking for us to fund that with some of our IED money. I mean, I guess it's under discussion, but I would just like to, after reading the report and everything else, it says that further study needs to be done to see how much it would be actually, how much it would actually save the village or save them in their power usage to do this before we, you know, I'd like to see further study done before we, you know, put any kind of, that kind of money out to help them out, you know, which I'm not, I'm not against helping them out, you know, especially if it helps, you know, it's going to help the taxpayers in cutting down their, their usage. Especially, the report says that they could turn down their, their chillers in the wintertime when, that's when we use the most power, that's whenever all the village residents turn their electricity on for their heat and stuff. That would save considerable, with us going over our, a lot of, a lot of power. I just think that we need to, let it know, Phil, if we, is there anybody that we can contact, contact as Mike Lyons or somebody else to further investigate, you know, how much it would cost?
I think that would be a good project for Mr. Pelkey when he comes back from vacation to talk to Mr. Lyons, because he'll understand the electrical part of it far better than I. Would you do that?
I mean, I understand, you know, I understood the, you know, the lighting and, you know, and the air compressors. You know, he went through the whole plant. They did, they did a study of the whole plant. His recommendation was, the biggest thing was the chillers, because that, they're, apparently they're old, they use a lot of electricity. He recommended, you know, this air duct. He also recommended a couple of other things. One was replacing the chillers, you know. We also need to sit down with Champlain Plastics and see what their, you know, see what their kind of goal is or, you know, plan of tactics, I guess, on this. You know, what kind of money they're willing to spend to upgrade or whatever else. So...
Do we have any other information for the meeting that they want? Is there any more information that...
Well, we talked, we talked, and what they, if you take a look at the second sheet of pro-technologies, is, is adding some piping and valving and utilizing outside water that they have, shutting their chillers right down. And once a 30-ton was a 40-ton, that's a considerable amount of energy saving. They're not running either of those in the wintertime. We did have a meeting with the manager, and, and we had a very cordial meeting, by the way. And my suggestion to them was to consider annotation. It would be a lot easier for this board to consider any of these if they were part of the village. And he did not say no to that.
Not only that, I mean, they are one of our...
He was saying that he would take it back to his, their people, right?
I mean, it wasn't only that. I mean, they are one of our electrical customers.
They are paying into that fund.
I mean, I'm not so worried about the annotation as, you know, I, I'd just like more information, you know. I mean, I read through the whole thing, and it wasn't only, it wasn't, this was, this, this proposal from this company was only one small part of, of the, of the overall project that they really need to do there.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I mean, it sounds like, it sounds like they, they brought in old equipment and, and it really needs to be upgraded. I mean, especially by the way this Mike Lyons talks on, you know, on the chillers and, you know, just saying that they're, they're very old and they use a lot of electricity because they are old, and, and they don't, you know, said they have a lot of, you know, and by the way it sounds is that they're not placed in the proper area in the building. They should, they should be on top of the building instead of in the building, because they're sucking air from the inside of the building and their filters are all plugging up. And they need, the chillers need to be go on top to where they can suck the air from the outside. And I just, I just think there's more, more to it than this, this little proposal that he's got here. And I'd just like to see how, you know, how far these guys are, are willing to go. I mean, are they willing to take more of his suggestions than, than just this, this proposal?
Well, he did tell us that they've got four more projects that they want to look at for energy savings. Well, this particular one, if the only thing they're asking for here is, is not ductwork, but piping, diverting piping, where you use cooling water for towers, cooling towers, instead of chill water from running the chillers during the winter. And I know Wyatt did that several years ago, where he piped and just used cooling, cooling towers.
But if you go into, go into his...
Yeah, you go into the whole thing.
Go into his thing, he's got...
There's lighting.
He's got quite a few recommendations.
Yeah, but this, this one item is just on that page.
Right.
So this request is just the $17,000?
That's right.
Right, that's just that, that's just the one thing.
And so when he refers on the top sheet, typically funding 50 to 70%, but have also funded up to 100%, he's talking about that $17,000 figure?
Right, yeah. And the rest of this is the complete audit that they did.
Right.
What, any idea what the dollar figure is on the rest of it, on the other four projects?
No, we have no idea.
And I'm not, you know, I'm not saying, you know, I don't know if that's all they're looking for is for that $17,000, but I'd also like, you know, I mean, if, if they're looking for 50% of that $17,000, that's fine, you know, I have no problem with that, but I'd also like to see them step up some of these other things that he has, you know.
Well, it would be good to see what the energy savings are in the village, right?
Yeah, exactly.
They can figure that out, right?
Well, he did say that they have four more projects that they're working on.
And, you know, we may want to contact him and ask him what...
I think this was right here, the reason why they're looking at it, because they could, you know...
Right, they can shut, they can shut those down. They can shut those down in the wintertime.
And I don't think this is a big project as far as amount of time to put in, just piping and valves.
Yeah, I think he said two weeks.
And they, you know, that, that could be in place of being used.
Why would they look into that before they built us?
No, God's hand on that. When we're into this, this energy program, we did audits in, in the Old Brand Union, and we put, we put new lightings in there. We did audits up to Wyatt, we put some work, put some stuff up to Wyatt, we paid for.
We did all of that.
We did some down the pods. We, we actually did...
Yeah, this isn't...
Overstructing. And it's just, yes, that honeywell, this Mike Lyons did the audit.
Right.
And now, now they know what they got to look for.
I just, you know, like I said, I'm not, I'm not against it. I'd just like to see what the savings would be, you know, how much power we could actually save, you know, to help, help on the taxpayers and, you know, the residents.
Ratepayers.
Yeah.
Well, actually, on this one, Dale, it'd be very easy to calculate. You're shutting off a 30-ton and a 40-ton chiller. All you need is a horsepower lamb motor, you can calculate what energy it would cost.
So I guess, when you get back from vacation, get, get ahold of Mike, see if they have somebody that can figure that for us, or bring back the next piece. Uh, that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, trustee Menard. Trustee Penfield?
I have two items tonight. The first one has to do with an answer that, to the question that Mike Tate proposed to us at the last meeting regarding the use of storage containers in the village. Phil had sent a memo to the zoning board. We had our meeting last Monday, and what you have on the top of this packet, you have photocopies from Carol. The very first page deals with what they came up with. They took Mike's suggestion in terms of prohibiting the use of truck boxes and shipping containers, and they wanted some specific information in it about, that it be allowed for temporary use for only new home construction or renovations of a home for no longer than six months. So they thought that that would be necessary. Basically, that would be the only reason why some of the village would, would need one on a temporary basis. We also added at the bottom that any existing truck boxes or containers will have to be compliant within two years from the date of being acted on this law. So they took action on this fairly quickly, and what you have in front of you in that packet basically are two different things. If you take the top page on storage containers, and then you flip through the adult entertainment section, you'll get to the section on the changes to the zoning law. And so we'll take the information on the storage containers and add it to what's actually the back half of this packet, which also, for the first time, contains the changes to the permitted use chart to go into the zoning code as well. They reviewed that, they had their final discussion on that also last Monday, and basically it's now set to go down to Tom Renee to work on the local law for the changes to the zoning code. And the information on the storage containers will be part of the changes that they make. We just need to find out where, which section is going to go in, he drafts the local law. He has about half of this already written, so all he needs to do is get the permitted use chart and go over on the storage containers. Okay.
Do we need to enter with that, Tom, or do we need to make a motion?
Well, we have, we have to, you know, we have to authorize sending all of the information out, so... And then the second half is, actually, it was written by Tom Renee. It's the local law on the regulation of adult entertainment in the town of Champlain. It's actually a local law that Tom Renee had written already. And Mike's advice, as well as Tom's advice, was just to change what is appropriate in here, and making it specific to the village of Rouse's Point. And then he would draft that as our local law. Do you remember last summer, we put the moratorium on adult use and entertainment for a year? So this would finish up that process. And what will happen is, assuming we get this back from Tom within a year, the moratorium will be lifted as soon as we enact the local law, so...
That's it?
That's it. So I would make a motion that we go ahead and send both packages of information to Tom Renee, so that he can update the one local law he's already working on, on the zoning changes, and also begin to write the adult containment regulation.
Second. I'll second.
Motion by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Menard. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by use of sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
That's it.
Thank you, trustee Penfield. Trustee Jefferson. John, would you like to talk in the sewer tonight?
Yes, yeah, real briefly. I report there's nothing back from the DEC in regards to the permission to use the Alphaline on the old bridge approach road. However, I talked to Doug Ferris last week, and he indicated to me that he had made a conversation with some of the state politicians in that regard, and things were going to happen relative to the past timeframe. With that in mind, we kind of hedged out, planned to keep the project rolling a little bit. We plan to, in the next week or so, sit down with Tom and Ernie, assign some priorities, better definition, and reduce the cost and alternatives for that particular project, trying to get it finalized. And once we get their priorities and input, basically kind of refreshing ourselves, incorporating any changes that have been made since last spring, then we would want to sit down with the sewer committee and finalize out the scope, the budget, schedule, all the project particulars. The impression that I got talking with the DEC representatives was also that permission is forthcoming in a relatively timely manner. However, I can speak that it's coming from the state, so their view of timeliness and our view is perhaps a little different. But it looks as though things are moving along for that project. Again, it's been kind of sitting on the shelf for a good long time, and I think we need to get some input from the plant operators, some input from Brian, and maybe sit down with the sewer committee, down with Brian, and hash out how we're going to proceed. But I was pretty much encouraged, for the first time in quite a while.
Any questions? I just have a couple things to talk about tonight. We're working on the village budget here in the next, you know, month or so, and it seems to me that the state and federal budgets are, they're working on those also, but we seem to see a continued deficit spending by the state and on the federal level. We're trying to hold the line on the budgets here in, in the village, but in the state level and the federal level, they just seem to be running on red ink, and I just think that we'd like to encourage everybody to, you know, get ahold of state representatives and the federal representatives and let them know that. Let's balance this budget, because if we're going to run deficit spending, we're just loading on a large amount of debt to our children and to our families. So I think it's important that somebody balances the budget here on the state and federal level. A couple other things I want to talk about tonight. I didn't know this till tonight, but you have to, in order, there's quite a few, quite a number of new residents come to the village here lately, and in order to vote, you have to be a reg, you have to be a resident for 30 days, so there's paperwork at the village office if someone needs the paperwork to register to vote. And I'd just like to encourage people to vote with the upcoming elections, and that's all I have to report on tonight.
Thank you, trustee Jefferson. Phil?
I just have one thing that I forgot to put on the agenda. We received a notice from the Chamber of Commerce that they're having a St. Patrick's Day breakfast, and it's going to be $20 per person, if you remember. And the board should consider it. I think I'd like to go and represent the village. I believe the mayor has indicated some interest in that. We are members of the Chamber of Commerce. It's going to be held, obviously, in March 17th, at the Angel Center at the college in Plattsburgh.
I'm going to motion that the mayor and Phil, they power this through.
I'll second that. Motion by trustee Menard, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, vote by use of sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Is that it, Phil?
That's all I have, sir.
Your reasons tonight, I send.
I just want to remind the board that there's a budget workshop on Friday, this coming Friday, February 20th, at 4:30 p.m.
Is that it?
That's all I have.
Ryan?
I don't know if John wants to bring up about the serpentine piping at this time.
Yeah.
I think it needs to be brought out for discussion.
I will quickly summarize, and hopefully you have a copy of our bid analysis letter. I had a chance to review it. Basically, the letter kind of summarizes the work we've done in the last month or so. We had quite a bit of interest in that particular bid. As you're aware, the purpose of the pipe is to allow the chlorine to have proper time to react with the water coming out of the filtration plane before it goes into the tank. It would allow you to drive a new tank offline without issuing a boil water notice. That's the basic purpose of the whole construction. We conducted a pre-bid site, adjusted a few old things via certified mail addendum for bidders, and we received a total of 11 bids. The low bidder, I have been in contact with them, they submitted back a written questionnaire saying that they did not leave anything out of their bid, they honored their bid. It's J.E. Sheen Contract Incorporated, a pot stamp. They have done work on it for us before, a rather sizable amount of pipe work. They have done work on them for us before, a rather sizable amount of pipe work and basically have a reasonably good reputation for that kind of work. Alternate number one, which was included, is potential cost savings. We used ductile iron pipe. Under that alternate, should you elect to choose it, AP Reel and Sons out of Ticonderoga was the low bidder. They had some minor informalities in their bid, but again, nothing of too importance. They also submitted written, a written response to our questionnaire indicating that they had reviewed their bid in detail and that they would not omitted any costs or significant costs of any nature. They have also done work under our plans and specifications previously acceptable and they were, consequently, we will not have any objection to the village awarding County Tribe number 5A to either Sheehan under the base bid or AP Reel and Sons under alternate number one.
John, sorry, can I interrupt you? I can hardly hear you. I can barely hear what you're saying, I'm sorry, but I just can't.
Okay, I apologize, I'll speak up.
That's okay.
Again, the two low bidders, one under bid alternate number one is AP Reel and Sons. They would, under that alternate, use ductile iron pipe. The base bid results was J.E. Sheehan Contracting Corp. of Potstam that was using PVC pipe. We had a significant amount of interest in it, total of 11 bids, which is kind of a little out of the ordinary for that small of a contractor and showed that the contractors were certainly looking for work for the spring. Contractors have stated that they are confident their bids contain all the necessary materials, labor, and other costs. Our estimate on the contract was depending on pipe prices, which are kind of volatile, somewhere in the order of 160 to 175,000. The two lowest bids are well below that range. The, at the request of village administrator, I also checked out the materials costs that is in the village order to purchase the materials and install it themselves. The materials would probably cost on the order of around $100,000 if the village elected to install a pipe using ductile iron pipe. The cost would be about $10,000 less than that. The original bids have been delivered to the village and the village board has a total of 45 days to award the bid. That period would expire on March 27th. However, you should be cautioned that delivery of this kind of pipe, 36 inches, is kind of rare and, well, it's not rare, but it's, it takes a little longer to get, nobody has a locally available stockpile of it. Generally takes six to eight weeks. Bidders indicated, all three, three of the low bidders indicated that they felt the work would take three or four weeks to, from start to finish. It's a relatively simple project and the bidding results, there's nothing there that's too confusing. And with that, I will conclude my reporting, yes.
I just have a couple of questions. Can you explain the difference between the PVC pipe and the DI pipe?
Yeah, basically.
Ductile iron pipe.
Ductile iron.
Oh, okay. So, I mean, is it something like the PVC is going to last longer or?
Um, they're both used very commonly in throughout the, throughout the North America. Thousands of miles of both put in every year. Certainly are equally capable of doing the same job. In the past, the village has preferred to use PVC pipe, which has certain advantages over ductile iron. Other villages and towns and whatever choose to use ductile. I myself would defer in the selection of pipe to a recommendation of people who have to work with it, that would be your DPW supervisor.
The other question I have is on the bid security, everybody else has a 20% bid bond, but Steve Fuller and Luck Brothers only have to provide a 5% bid bond and understand that.
Okay, basically, that's kind of an informality on their two parts. What the bid specifications required was to post a bond equal in value to 20% of their bid. Luck Brothers and Fuller submitted bonds that were in the amount of 5% of their bids. Basically, the bid bond itself doesn't mean a heck of a lot in this instance, so it's kind of, now, it's a little mistake they made, but then again, it's nothing too severe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here's my question, Brian, I mean, are we, this summer, are we going to have enough time to do this and would it save us any money by doing it ourselves?
No, not for the price that.
But I mean, it looks like you have to rent an excavator and a crane to put the stuff in.
What, well, I found that there was 11, there was 11 different companies that submitted a bid and I think we're getting the best price, you know, for our money because there was 11, it was very competitive. And like John was saying, for $100,000 of the materials, I think you're looking at $41,000 to put it in and we have a warranty also for a year of the workmanship. And they'll come in and, come in and put it all in and be out and we wouldn't have to tie any of our guys up.
Your workload for this summer is.
Very heavy.
Well, I mean, up here, I didn't hear.
Yeah.
They got snorkels, don't they?
We've got snorkels.
Now, let's make a motion that we award the, put a little bidder, or the contract a little bidder.
Do you think we're clarifying which one they're awarding?
Or the PVC or the ductile? What do you like?
Which is better, John? The ductile?
Again, I would.
What's out there now?
Everything we have put in here is using.
Everything we've put into PVC.
Anything that I find with the PVC that it seemed to be a little, has more flexibility to it. Out of the 21 years that I've been here, I haven't seen a PVC pipe break. It's always been, like, our water breaks have been ductile iron because they're such a rigid pipe, there's no give to them. And when they break, they snap off clean. And if you snap off a line that's 36 inches in size, you're going to have a flow of water going somewhere.
They take that 10 inch or something.
Let's take the low bidder on the PVC pipe.
Motion made by trustee Menard, seconded by trustee Penfield. Is there anything more discussion? No discussion?
Well, yeah, so if we, we award the bid tonight, what's the timeframe roughly, John? Six to eight weeks?
To get some materials done, so, if they want to start the whole process.
Well, we'll be, we're all set for them to do it whenever, is that correct? Or are they waiting on us for any other work or is it? No.
All the valves, everything.
Yeah, all plumbing's set. Wait for the ground to thaw.
That won't be.
That'll be a little wet, man.
July.
Way it's going.
We're locked in on this price and everything because we, you know, it's all PVCs, all diamond down, energy prices. That's it. Bid is a bid, my boy. 45 days, all right?
Once they sign the contract. Once they sign the contract and.
Well, 45 days, I'd be a little careful, we can sign a contract with three foot of frost in the ground and retain the special contract to start. When the bid specification is written, the village will issue a notice to proceed, which means the contractor can actually start work on the site and the village would issue that when suitable weather conditions are available.
Any other discussion? Vote, call, vote. Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
The mayor votes aye. Okay. Eric, you got anything tonight?
Um, very limited. The electrical contractor at the water plant and the water tower are still on hold. The mechanical contractor, for some reason, theirself hasn't, well, they finally have, but they ordered the exhaust fans for the chlorine room at the water plant and the water tower. The electrical contractor being off until we finalize the roof issue at the DE room, we're trying to not incur an extra charge from them by having them come in and then having to call them back because we have an interruption in their work. Right now, mechanical contractor has some limited things to finish, the exhaust fans, some final connections of pipes, some anchoring on the chemical lines, and then we'll be able to get the electrical contractor back in here. Once we have them back in, it'll be like a week or so and then we'll get those chemical lines up and running. You'll be able to get the telemetry unit from the tank down to the water plant up and running. So, right now, I know Gary and John are reviewing some electrical issues to try to adjust that contract to allow them to get going forth, but until we have all of our electrical equipment in place, I'm not going to recommend us and the electrical contractor to come in and then have to come in another day, but they've got probably a week, two weeks of work left. Any questions?
Where do we expect to get that roof fix? It's all, so I said.
That it?
That's it.
Thank you. Melissa, unfortunately, you're on the bottom of the list tonight.
Well, you know, I have to say, I was going to tell you, it's good to be back at a board meeting. Don't mind, I'm going to come over here, must be from teaching, I can't stand to have anybody behind my back when I talk. You know, it's really sad to say when refuse containers and adult entertainment and sewer pipes make you feel at home, but thank you, that was all nice to be back. I'm glad to hear we don't have snakes in the pipe, so I'm a little worried about that for a minute. I'm here with Dick Baker, who is the vice chairman of our steering committee, and I really thank you, George, and the board for giving us a little time tonight to bring you up to date on the quality community process. What we'd like to do is fill you in on where we are now and hear your input, answer any questions you might have before we go forward in the process. As you all know, the Quality Community Initiative was begun by Governor Pataki in the year 2000 in an attempt to improve economic revitalization efforts in the state's communities. And part of the initiative was planning money to go out to communities to do studies that were needed before they went into economic revitalization projects. In 2001, county legislator Celine Paquette brought the secretary of state, Randy Daniels, to Rouse's Point. He was visiting the area, he's an old friend of hers, and she drove him through and he was very impressed by what he saw along the waterfront in the village, he was impressed by what the village had already done in improving its infrastructure. And as a result, Rouse's Point was urged to submit an application for the Quality Community Process. Well, it turned out well and as you know, August 2002, Rouse's Point was selected as a demonstration community and took the steering committee. We spent a lot of time trying to get up to speed on what it means to be a demonstration community. It's a really significantly different thing than I had ever encountered and I think most people who've worked with grants and so on, because it's not a grant program, it's not an unending source of funding. It's, it's, in this, in our case, it's money to fund the planning process so that the village has a plan in place for what the village residents, the board, the community wants to do on economic revitalization. When I heard about it, honestly, I have to tell you, I thought it was too good to be true. I mean, I, in my wildest dreams, someone would have come and said, "Well, here's $60,000, go have your residents do a plan for the village." But I hope, as I told this gentleman sitting here, I hope he realizes how lucky he is that people keep chasing him around with checks. What we're involved in with right now is the formation of what is called a Main Street Revitalization Study and Action Plan. And we're calling that the plan because it gets a little fire in heaven, we keep saying all those different names. It's called the Main Street Plan even though it can apply to any area in the village that has commercial potential. And the cost of doing this is offset by the state grants, I have said, $60,000. That's $60,000 to hire a consultant to do a study, to analyze current economic climate, Rouse's Point's strengths, current land use, traffic, the market, and make some recommendations to us about what might work well for Rouse's Point in the future. So, that $60,000 is really a gift in that for years, there have been different things talked about, what if Rouse's Point did this? How about becoming an antique community? How about trying to reduce the truck traffic? How about doing this or that? We're going to get a professional to give us an answer, not based upon what I think or what Dick thinks or what anybody thinks, but based upon their analysis of what would work and what is feasible. So, I think that's a very exciting thing that we're going to be able to do. And I know that people out here are interested and I know the board is, the village's matching share of that, the $60,000 match, was met by your work that you did on the village office facade last summer and the installation of the ornamental streetlights. That was the village's commitment to improving the downtown area. So, it really, I think it's nice that it is no additional cost to the board. The first thing that you did, of course, is appoint us, the steering committee, and as I said, we've been working trying to get up to speed so that we could reach out to the public and get their input. I just wanted publicly, since I had the chance, thank the people who are working on that steering committee. Dick and Nancy Baker, Lena Bombadur, Alan Kaufman, Sandy Kelly, Lisa Maschell, Pete LaFountain, Pat O'Connor, Mary Rasko, and Pat Racine. I really feel privileged to be working with this group of people. They are very, very positive, our meetings have been really productive and it's, it's just a great opportunity to be working as part of the process. Okay. So, as I said, it, we're in the process of developing this plan and I hope in a few minutes to hear from you, to see if there's anything you would like us to specifically target the consultant's attention, you know, anything you feel really should be investigated. There are a couple of other parts of the Quality Community Process that are ongoing. Another important part is that the village has a task force in Albany of representatives from the Empire State Development Corporation, the Department of Transportation, SUNY is involved, Parks and Recreation, and these are people who are familiarizing themselves specifically with Rouse's Point and they're going to be there to assist us in whatever the village decides to do in the future. There are technical expertise, they are going to be able to steer us in the right direction. So, that is nice because I know you've probably been in the same position that I was in when you, you feel like you need something done and you're out there kind of shopping around, trying to figure out what the state might have that would help you. And that task force should be looking on their own for things that might help the village. The other part of the Quality Community Project that I think is very interesting is that they're, they really want to build what they call the local capacity to continue the project. Once the state steps back and the planning money is finished, they would like to have people in the village who can continue this. And this is that workshop, series of workshops that Village Clerk Bahamwa and I will be attending this spring. They're going to train us in how to mobilize these resources at the state level and give us information that should help in the process. And that sounded like a lot more fun before we got our first homework assignment today. Phil and I were talking about it. We have about a, what, seven-page questionnaire to do before we go and we have to be ready with a presentation and 30 copies of handouts to give our fellow workshop attendees. So, you have to say, anything that people are going to put that. So, you have to say, anything that people are gonna put that much work into has to be good, right? Hopefully, it sounds to me like it's gonna have a really good payoff. Okay, so, just, and I tried to really emphasize this at the public meeting that we had, even though the state is, stands ready to assist us with technical expertise, even though they're involved in the process, this really is a local effort. At its heart is finding out what the community wants and trying to come up with a realistic plan to get there. Our steering committee's goal is to develop a long-range plan that is supported by the village residents, business owners, local government, so that it has a good chance of becoming reality. And if it's successful, if it's a good plan, it should not only work toward revitalizing the economic potential of the village, it should also enhance the quality of life for Rousas Point residents now. Because I think there's a, you know, there's a healthy amount of skepticism among the public and I don't blame them. In general, when you talk about government, like Brian was talking about the deficits, you can't blame people for being a little skeptical. We, we don't wanna come up with some pie in the sky plan that might, you know, target all our hopes on getting IBM to relocate here. If it would happen, super, we'd be glad to take them, but probably not likely. Hopefully, we can come up with things that will be low cost, no cost, that can really improve our lives here today. We held a public meeting on January twenty-first to present this information to the public and hear their input. It was really a pleasure to see how many people did turn out. We had several residents there, we had the whole steering committee, and the residents gave us their thoughts. For example, they suggested we involve marina owners in the process, an excellent suggestion in light of the importance of a lake and marinas in the village. So, Dick has gone out and contacted the owner, the marina owners who are here, and they're going to join us at our next meeting. So, we're really pleased with that. Other suggestions were that we try to maximize what we have in the village, maybe increase the use of the rec center in the summertime, try to bring concerts into the parks to get people into the habit of going downtown, seeing that as a vital and interesting place to be. Residents expressed interest in finding out what could be done to reduce noise downtown, if there's a party, is there a parking problem? If there is, how can it be solved? They'd like to see an analysis of traffic, car, truck, bicycle, you know, what, how could we fit into the, the, George, the bike?
Byways.
Byways that goes on. And, and, you know, those are all, I think, really good ideas. We've asked county legislator Pocat to join us, she'll be coming to our march meeting. She's gonna fill us in on regional efforts and what's going on regionally that we wanna make sure to tap into. There's some very important historical commemorations that are coming up in the next few years and our local historical society is, is working here in the village, trying to take advantage of those things. We had specific facilities, a suggestion of the swimming pool, something that would be good to study, whether that would be useful and feasible. And so, what we're doing with this list that the residents gave us is we're, we're making a list of topics, as I said, to steer the consultant that we hire, and we'd really like to hear anything that you have to say. In this next month, we're going to be finalizing our request for proposals. Basically, we're going out to try to find a consultant to recommend to the board that you hire. We expect that'll take a couple of months to get them in, have them look at the village, do some interviews, and then make a recommendation. And then I expect they'll take several months to do the study. We really are committed to public input. As soon as we get a consultant, we're going to have another public meeting so the consultants can meet the public and hear from the public. When the consultant's study comes back, we'll present that to the public and hear their input. And so, that, this will be a continuing process throughout the whole Quality Community process. And at this point, let's see if I missed anything. I think that's it. Sam can attest the moment my board also looked forward to, I'm gonna stop talking and see if you have any questions I can answer about the process, about what we're doing, or any suggestions you have, direction you'd like to point us.
Sounds good. You ever think, Melissa, sending out a survey? I know, I know the return on surveys are usually low, but you do get some ideas off.
I think it's a good idea. I, I think it's something that some residents have mentioned to me and I, I think it's something that our consultant ought to be able to help us put one together.
We, we had a pretty good response on the Stabilize survey. The survey did prior to getting the store, so we had a decent response from the residents on that.
Right, so, I definitely think that's something we want to do. Mr. McLeod, David McLeod, he's from the Department of State, he's our rep that was at our meeting, recommended that one of the things we look for in a consultant is someone with really strong credentials in terms of public outreach, developing a survey, getting, getting out to the community and getting their, their opinion. So, I think that's an excellent suggestion.
Did I give the residents any sort of guidance? Do you sit down and ask someone to come up with a list of suggestions? Some people don't know where to start. Is that something also? I know, I know a survey might provide something like that.
A consultant might.
Yeah, I think there are people who might wanna offer input, but might not know where to begin.
Right, I, I think that they will do that. The, our game plan that the state has given us gives many different things that the consultants are going to need to investigate on a general basis, you know, efficiency and use and what the current economic expenses are and so on. But I think the study, the consultant in preparing the study should have that kind of a list for us to get out to people. And then, and we really wanna hear public comment. I try to draw the distinction between the study and the plan. We have to make up a plan at the end, but the consultant is doing the study and then we get to decide what goes in the plan. And that'll be a really good point with this, you know, at the end of the study, again, get public input before the village finalizes the plan.
Are you considering economic development?
Definitely, definitely.
It does, you do have a tool that'd be available to us sometime this summer. I don't know just when, but two years ago, I was appointed on the Economic Development Committee for one of the municipal electorates. And we have had two meetings with the power authority in Albany. And I always mess this up, but the Economic Development Corporation for the state of New York.
Right.
And one of the things that came out was the municipal, municipal electorates are not marketed, especially by local development corporations. They're not marketed for the municipal power. So, what power authority is gonna do in the, in the economic development, they're going to link their websites and then they're gonna link their websites to all the villages and the cities and towns or whatever that have municipal power so that when somebody's looking for something and they go to the USDA or whatever it is, whatever they call it, then they can go right down through it, see what's available.
I think that's a great idea. It's really important that the consultants understand what it means to be MEUA.
Municipal electric.
And, and how that's an advantage, so.
Anyone got any other questions? Is anybody out there wanna take a shot at her?
Sorry, Mr. Martin, you have to listen to this again. Okay, we will have our public meeting. Calvin has very generously agreed to put that on the airwaves on channel twenty-four. And so, that will be the whole, the public meeting will be on also in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Appreciate it. Anybody else wish to address the public at this time? If not, I'd take a motion for adjournment. So, move.
Second.
Moved by trustee Menard, seconded by trustee Penfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Go opposed. Never had a question come up yet, opposed. Eight o'clock, Bill. Thank you, everybody.